Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the October 28, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Dallow.
Here.
Ms. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Meredith.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Chairman Moffett is absent. Chairman Turner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge our acting planner, Julie Misich, is here, associate planner, Nick Fiore, and our attorney, Mary Ann Dennewith. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'm going to ask that we move site plan number 19-40, which was last on our agenda, up to number one, since it's a rather easy modification. And with that, I'll take a motion on the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes from our October 14, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First site plan is number, site plan number 19-40, Michael DiAgostini, Quadrate Construction LLC, 14329 23 Mile Road, northeast corner of 23 Mile Road and Oro Drive, a facade renovation to an existing 9,200 square foot building. Is the applicant here? Come on down, sir. Give us your name and address for the record, and after you're done speaking, make sure you sign in. Okay?
Absolutely. Evening. Michael DiAgostini, Quadrate Construction, 15801 23 Mile, Macomb Township. I'm here representing the owner. I'm the contractor for the project.
Okay, I need you to speak up a little bit, too.
I'm sorry.
What are you proposing?
Well, we're doing an interior and exterior renovation of the building. It hasn't been touched since it was originally constructed back in late 80s. So the interior is really just a renovation of what was already there, not changing much in there, other than everything's going to be brand new. Exterior, you probably saw from the elevations, removing the old wood siding front and have a whole new facade planned for that. The masonry will remain as is, and the glass will be changed. Pretty much going to look like a new building when we're done.
That's it? For now? Okay.
That's it for now.
Nick, you did the review on this. Give us your report.
So as the applicant stated, the facade hasn't been improved since 1988 when it was constructed. So the improvements that you're proposing are welcome, and it adds architectural variety to the 23 mile corridor. Since there's no increase in the building footprint, my comments are pretty minor. It's mostly just site plan items that need to be added, such as a legal description, location map, the adjacent zoning of parcels, benchmarks, easements, and the existing setbacks on the building. And then I'll need to see cut sheets of the proposed light fixtures, and I'll need to indicate on the site plan that no roof mounted equipment, or, sorry, that the roof mounted equipment will be screened. Other than that, I don't have much else to say about this project.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. A motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan 19-40 for Quadrate Construction, 14329 23 Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department engineering comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner DeSico, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. You're all set. Item number two, site plan number 19-38, Giovanni Gagliol, foreign and domestic collision, 8141 Millis, north side of Millis, east of Van Dyke, addition to an existing collision shop, and site improvements. Is the applicant here? Come on down. Name and address for the record.
My name is Giovanni Gagliol. The address is 8141 Millis Road, Shelby Township, Michigan.
What are you proposing?
We're proposing a 1,200, a little over 1,200 square foot addition to our existing building. Basically, we're taking the current face of the building and moving it south 20 feet, you know. So we're basically taking the existing face and extending it out another 20 feet. And it's going to go 63 feet east to west.
Okay.
To add to the current construction.
Okay. I've got some questions, but first we'll go over to Nick. You also did this review. Go ahead.
So I'd like to welcome you for making the improvements. I think that improving the allocation would be good, not only for that little corridor, but for your business in general. However, with all these renovations to existing sites, our goal is to make them as complimentary to the existing zoning codes that we have now. And as such, there's a few items that I need to be adjusted on your site plan. First of all, the, there's a number of variances you would need in order to get this approved. You need a variance for the setback encroachment for the front yard, a variance for the front yard fencing, which is not permitted in the C2 district. And then there's a number of issues with the proposed parking areas, such as this parking space width and the location of parking spaces. They block access to the rear yard where you store the vehicles. The trash enclosure's blocked by parking spaces. And one of the items that I saw with the site plan was that some of the general notes for the site plan didn't pertain to this project. So you may want to talk with your architect about that. Since there's so many issues that need to be addressed, I would suggest you come into the municipal offices and discuss with me how we can make the site plan a little bit more with the current zoning district regulations, and that we can get a site plan that's good for both of us and satisfies your needs and makes us happy as part of the township.
Okay. Will that motion be postponed, Mr. Chairman?
Just want to ask one question. On the, one of the reasons I'm concerned about it is in your proposed addition, you have cars parking there, and you have cars parking everywhere on this property, haphazard manner. That's one of the concerns, is there's not enough parking. And one question I have is, since he needs all these variances for this property, is it not overbuilt?
I wouldn't say it's overbuilt, but I would say the outdoor storage of vehicles and the parking spaces, maybe a little bit much for that property.
Okay.
As it exists.
Can I, can I comment on something?
Sure, go ahead.
So if you've seen the actual pictures of the, of the building, I submitted some pictures with the package, you know, the first set of cars that are in front of the building would actually be in the building with the new addition, right? So, and from what I understand, there, there needs to be three parking spots per serviceable bay, and which would be in front, now would be in front of that new addition, right? So it seems like at Face Valley, there's a lot of cars, but the first line of cars would be in the building, right? So you wouldn't see those cars anymore because we would be utilizing that. But that's kind of what I was proposing. I know it's, it looks funky with the cars out front in the picture because there's no addition, obviously, you know.
Well, it's not just Face Valley. It looks funky with the cars on the west side. It looks like one of those puzzles you have on, when you try to move the cars around in the parking lot and try to get them out. My daughter has one of those. That's what it looks like. Only these are parked in a very haphazard manner.
Right.
So that's one of the concerns. I think if you go in and talk to our, our planning department, they can walk you through this, but there are some issues need to be addressed.
Okay.
Any other commissioners have any comments? Mr. Dallow, go ahead.
To Julie, maybe she could help me with that. Do we have a lot of buildings on Van Dyke with septic tank still in existence there?
I don't believe so.
With, with changes like that to this building, can we have the owner tap into the sewer?
Upgrade, I believe he, if there's any improvements made, he will have to tap in.
Because that's most of the parking that he need that would require a removal of your septic tank? And that is something that I just wanted to know if there's a lot of buildings.
He is located on, on Millis, though, so he's a parcel away from Van Dyke. So it all depends on where the water main is located, if it's accessible to him or not.
Right. My, I, I believe our neighbor, Independence Auto Repair, is on Van Dyke, and I believe they're still tied into their own septic. And our addition that I'm proposing is adding the square footage to the south side of the building, and our septic field is in the lot, in a grass area, you know, so it really wouldn't impose on the existing septic. We're not even going near it, you know, to be honest, so.
I will say, per the Macomb County Department of Health, there's not allowed to be parking on top of the septic field.
Right. We have just, we store parts there, our parts, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Meredith.
Reference, uh, storage materials, the oils and lubricants. I don't, I don't see, you have a storage facility for that, or you just barrel it up and ship it out?
For...
Mills and lubricants you take out of the vehicle?
We don't really, we have a mechanic do all the mechanical, as far as, we deal with more like the chemical side, like paint thinners, and we have a waste removal company take that. That's our primary waste is thinner, you know, paint thinner.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Flynn, I'll entertain your motion.
Moved, postponed, site plan 1938 Giovanni Gagliol, 8141 Millis, parcel 2307 27 102 032 on the basis that he needs to have a meeting with the planner.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Flynn, supported by Mr. Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Get with our planning department. They can walk you through it, okay?
I sign in.
Please sign in, yeah. Forgot to do that last meeting. I apologize, Commissioner Gonzalez. I called you Commissioner Gomez. I apologize for that. Next item on our agenda, site plan number 16-28, Herman Walker, 3+ Corporation, Malzahn Woods Condominiums, 6191 24 Mile Road, north side of 24 Mile, east of Mound Road, preliminary planned unit development, two single-family lots, and 10 duplex lots. Developers here? Come on down.
Good evening. Phil Ruggeri, on behalf of the petitioner. I'm Mr. Douglas Crane. He's the principal of the ownership of the land. My address is 43231 Shainer, Sterling Heights, 48313. I've got a depiction of the site. It's approximately 10 acres in size. My client has owned the property in excess of 30 years. It's a very troublesome piece of land to deal with. It's heavy, heavily wooded. It has a power line system that runs from the southwest corner diagonally to the northeast corner. There's also, the brown area depicts the conservation area that was given...
Would you speak louder, please?
Yeah. Talk a little louder, Phil.
Oh, I'm sorry. The brown area is a depiction of the conservation area, which has been granted some years ago that preserves that particular system of trees on the site. And for all intents and purposes, this site, not in with those obstacles, does not have sanitary access at this point. It's approximately 1,350 feet away, going towards the east. So it'd have to be brought along the northern property lines to the site to service it. So essentially, this is more or less an infill parcel of land that has a lot of obstacles. We spent more than the last two years with Mr. Win and with Julie on trying to find the right fit for this particular site. We had envisioned somewhere between 35 and 40 units, and we tried to see how that would fit on, and it just was not going to happen with this particular piece of land. And our last filing before this was 27 units and three lots. That would have been, the three lots would have been on the, the east, the northeast corner of the site there along 25, or 24 Mile Road, and there would be 27 duplex units. We had further condensed with the conservation easement that was brought to our attention, that we refined it down to 20, 20 duplex units, or 10 buildings, and two lots instead of three. And if I can, is this thing mobile?
No, but this is.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
This is the area where the, the two lots are. They're 90 footers, and they're in excess of 150 feet. We have the detention area, which shows us another amenity for the site. We have pushed back the entrance so that you maintain a privacy to this development as opposed to pushing it onto 24 and gathering more, to get more units. We've eliminated this area here, where units were first designated. That keeps a nice open space along the perimeter and preserves the trees. All the eastern border is pretty well preserved, so the concentration of the units is primarily to the west in an L-shaped format. Everything in white depicts the unit, the duplex units themselves. We spent a lot of time designing this particular product that would be utilized for the site. They're approximately 1,500 square feet with an optional loft, which is another 600 square feet. So the units in effect could be close to 2,100 square feet. The building itself looks like one large home. That was the, the cap, the image we wanted to portray, but he's, in essence, it is two units with a lot of concentration of brick, stone, and architecturally designed shingles. We've got nice chimney features on here as well. So the PUD process would virtually adopt what was, what is presented by the petitioner, which would be this depiction of the, of the unit itself elevation-wise and landscaping-wise. We would incorporate it as, as indicated on the plan, and it would run with the land, so the developer would be contractually obligated to develop the site as presented. We feel that with all the difficulty on this site, this is a great opportunity to make something out of a very difficult pe, uh, piece of land to develop. We think these particular unit styles are a product that is now well-received in Shelby Township. It gives an alternative style of living. A lot of people like to downsize, and having a unit between 15 and 2,000 square feet in the heart of Shelby Township is, is an ideal location for these particular individuals. The units are going to go between 375, 4,000, I'm sorry, $375 to $400,000 base price, and obviously, there'll be extras that would be added. So that'll add considerable value to all the perimeter homes that are located, that surround this particular site. So obviously, we're not, we're going to have an increase in value as opposed to any, any decrease. The, and the complex, the complex itself is a very nice private setting. It's more or less carved into that wooded format that is there, and as you can see, utilizing only the areas where you can avoid impact on, on trees and conservation and the power lines. It's, it's a very nice design. And we think with the two lots on 24 Mile Road, it keeps that residential character for all intents and purposes along 24, and this development shoots back into the northern area of the development. So that's essentially it. We think it'll definitely be well-received. The only real challenge is bringing that sanitary sewer, which is 1,350 feet away. It's a lot of challenge to have, but my client, at this point, wants to develop the site, and it's a challenge he's willing to, to encounter. I'm here for any other questions that you might have, and likewise, Mr. Crane. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Julie?
Okay, just a brief explanation on the PUD process. It happens in two phases. The first phase is just a preliminary conceptual review of the plan, just to accept it, so to say, the layout of it. And then it goes into the final stage, and at that point, we will have a public hearing. But between the preliminary and the final, everything will have to be completed as far as soil erosion permits and, you know, Macomb County Road Commission in any easements, you know, obtained. That happens in between the two processes. Conceptually, I believe this plan is a good plan, given the physical characteristics of the site with the conservation easement in the ITC corridor. I do have a concern. I think the retention ponds in the detention area is underneath the ITC corridor, so I think you would probably have to, I would imagine, get approvals.
Need to get an approval letter from them.
Correct. And like Mr. Ruggeri said, the biggest concern is the, in this, is the sanitary, taking the sanitary sewer to this site. The site plan overall meets all the setback requirements between the units, rear yard setbacks, front yard setbacks. I know there, I noticed there was not a sidewalk in the development. I would strongly urge a sidewalk installed around that entire development. But overall, I think conceptually, it's, it's a feasible plan, given the restrictions of the site.
Thank you. Mr. Ruggeri, the conservation easements on the northwest corner there, is that what I understand?
Yes, everything that is in, like a brown topish color, or this area here and all this. Everything that's in that color is, is a conservation easement.
So if you, I have to ask the question. I always do. And you, you're going from R1B, you want to go to a higher density. I know there's the ITC, there's a conservation easement. This property cannot be developed as R1B homes?
No, it can't. There's too many constraints on it. You're looking at one side of the road, that you'd be able to put any type of homes on there. It's not, it's not economically feasible. You can't do it. Plus, you've got to bring the sanitary 1,350 feet with, with the number of lots that you would try to squeeze onto the site. No one would undertake that, that, that task.
Okay.
It's just not economically feasible.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
I agree with the, your comments and the planner's comments. I, it's, it's less density than if you were to develop an R1B straight up. I think you've got some good buffers in there, and it's a nice transitional use between the commercial and the one family to the north, so. And I like the idea that maybe we'll improve the property values for those folks with some more expensive product being in there. And there's, there is virtually none of this style of product. People like to complain about apartments, and I don't think we need, necessarily need any more high-rise, pack 'em and stack 'em apartment-style stuff. But certainly for our over 55 crowd, there's a niche for this in Shelby, so I think at the end of the day, this would be a good one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Even for the under 55 crowd, Mr. Flynn. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. A motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Appone.
Moved to conclude, site plan 16-21, Malzahn Woods Condominium Project has merit and the potential to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and authorize a submission of a final plan addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Appone, supported by Commissioner Dallow. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Can I vote yes? Call on me? Do you call on me?
Who?
Do I get a vote?
Oh, Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Flynn.
Yes.
Okay. Now a motion carries. Now we're all set.
Is there a public speech to this motion?
And, had a, this plan?
There'll be a public hearing on this.
This is not a public hearing tonight, but...
This is not a public hearing.
This was just a preliminary.
Yeah, if you listen to the planner, it's a multi-step process. All we did tonight is say, we think it might be okay. It's got to be flushed out. So he's got a lot of work to do yet, and at that point, when he comes back, address the engineer concerns, then you're going to be able to come back for a public hearing and say, I want landscaping here. I got this question about that. I live at this house, and I think he's going to be too close. You'll have a chance to address all those concerns at the public hearing. So this is really just baby step one in the process. So you'll, you'll get plenty of bites at the apple.
Well, if you want, also, you can address us any specific issues under business on the floor at the end of the meeting. If you want to wait around till the end. You can bring it up tonight, or you, like Mr. Flynn said, you can wait till the official public hearing, and then come forth and let us know then.
But they can call you?
Oh, yeah, you can. Mr. Ruggeri just offered for you to call him, too, but again, if you want to speak publicly, you can do so tonight or at the public hearing.
Get him in the lobby.
Okay, the next site plan, 19-39 SLU 7, George Papadalis, Teddy's Greenhouse and Garden Center, 4343 24 Mile Road, north side of 24 Mile, west of Shelby Road. A site plan modification to accommodate a landscape design and installation service company. This is a public hearing. I'll have Secretary Moore call the, or, we've the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, George Papadalis, Telly's Greenhouse and Garden Center, 4343 24 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316. Proposed use Landscape Design and Installation Service Company. Location, 4343 24 Mile Road, north side of 24 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. Site plan number 19-39 SLU-7, Sidwell number 23-07-08-354-019. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet Monday, October 28, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use in the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Morris Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on October 9, 2019. Eighty-seven property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on October 4, 2019.
Thank you. Sorry, I was conferring with the attorney. Commissioner, Attorney Meredith, does the notice meet all requirements stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Okay, any questions for the commissioners so far? All right, this is, do we receive any new correspondence? All right, this is, do we receive any new correspondence? I know we had a bunch in our packet. Did we get any new correspondence?
Just one this, tonight, that was waiting for us. Should I even mention the few pieces that we had gotten in our packet?
I'm sure they'll come up during the public hearing, so.
Oh, okay.
If you want to mention it, sure, go ahead.
Just to put it on record, I'd like to. There were forty-six people that signed a petition to not allow any other business operating from this facility, and we did receive pieces of correspondence, one from Elaine Tonkin, the other from a Dorothy Mazeroski, sorry, apologize for the pronunciation, a Gerald Butler, a Corby Mason. These people have spoken out against adding another business to this property.
All right, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. Petitioner and his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. Petitioner's here, you can come on down and let us know what you'd like to do.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners, thank you. My name is John Gaber. I'm the attorney for the petitioner, George Papadellis, who's with me, and we have Ryan Youngblood, who is here as well. We have a presentation that we'd like to make, because this is a rather complex issue, much more so than what we've seen already this evening, and I believe they have it, they've got it up on the screen right now. If you'll bear with me, I'd like to go through this, please.
Sure.
So this is Telly's Greenhouse, run by Mr. Papadellis. He's been in this business all his life, and essentially, he's run this business at this location since two thousand and nine. The issue, the reason we're before you tonight, is because he provides a wide array of services and products for retail sales, and some things he does well, and some things he doesn't do quite as well. Given the needs of the marketplace these days and the consumers, he needs to do more of these things well, which is why we're in front of you tonight to talk about, you know, these particular uses, and continuing the uses that were there when Mueller's was there, and uses that Mr. Papadellis has engaged in, but, you know, it would make more sense, for many reasons, for Mr. Youngblood to continue those uses. I will say that we just received the staff report and the attorney letter on Friday. Put together this PowerPoint, so forgive me if it's got typos in it and isn't as complete as it should be. But anyway, let's start, let's start going through this. This property obviously has some history. This property is uniquely situated with a history unlike any other in Shelby Township. Now, Mueller's Sunrise Nursery began operations on this site in nineteen fifty-eight, and they continued a landscaping and nursery business until two thousand and nine, when they sold out to Mr. Papadellis. Such use began before the zoning ordinance was even enacted, so it was a legal nonconforming use at that point in time. Mueller's operations primarily included tree, shrub, growing on-site, landscape design and installation, and limited retail sales. Next. Telly's, as I said, purchased the property in two thousand and nine, and at that time, Mr. Papadellis came before you, the Planning Commission, and he was approved as a Class A nonconforming use under the zoning ordinance, to continue the landscaping and nursery services, and to add significant retail garden center component to the use. Now, the Planning Commission approved a revised site plan for these operations based on the following findings, taken out of the minutes, that the site had been used for a retail nursery for an extended period of time, the new improvements on the site plan were designed to minimize any negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and screening has been provided for that purpose as well. Finally, the proposed hours of operation and the seasonal nature of the business were acceptable to the Planning Commission at that point in time. So Mr. Papadellis explained in two thousand and nine that the improvements would be done in phases, because there was quite a bit for him to bite off at any one time, and obviously, you've got to sell a lot of plants to generate enough revenue to pay for these improvements. So all the improvements require township's site plan approval on this site in the past and currently, but only the buildings and structures for commercial and retail use require township permits. The agricultural uses do not, which is why he was able to, you know, build the barn building that he just built recently without a permit from the township. It was granted site plan approval, but not permits. Then in two thousand and thirteen, four years later, the Planning Commission granted a revised site plan approval. So looking at these two segments of approval by the Planning Commission, the improvements that were, that were on the site plan, that were granted, were to build a retail building and outdoor display areas for greenhouses, for the berm along the west property line against the residential neighbors, and we'll show photos of that and talk about that later, for a concrete parking lot with a rain garden. Essentially, these are bio swales in the front of the property by Twenty-Four Mile Road. In the parking area, it was, it was a dirt parking area, then it became concrete, and between the parking areas, you had somewhat of a stormwater drainage component, which were bio swales that were introduced at that point in time. Now, he also added a passing lane and tapers on Twenty-Four Mile Road, a barn, as we mentioned. The barn was approved for a concrete pad and driveway around it, which haven't been installed, and we'll get into that. And then a stormwater drainage system. The barn, the stormwater drainage system, and the retention pond were just recently, recently installed. Now, the retention pond, which I know has been an area of concern for the neighbors, it was just completed, and it was completed to engineering standards. Now, AEW looked at this, and AEW reviewed it, and concluded that it does meet the calculation requirements of the township. Now, this slide essentially shows AEW's calculations. We need to submit this to the township, because this is rather recent. You can't read the yellow, probably because that's too far away, you may be able to on your screen, but you see the required capacity and the capacity provided. The capacity provided is greater than the required capacity, as required by the township and its site plan approval. So we've met that requirement, but that's something we have to show to the township to confirm still, as part of our site plan approval process. And we do admit that we have open site plan issues. As I mentioned, Mr. Papadellis has been tackling these issues over time. The three open issues that remain are the gravel areas, as I mentioned, around the barn, which were approved as concrete on the site plan. There are bulk material bins that are out in the back of the property, and there are hoop houses, and I'll show you photos of those in a couple minutes. Next. So this is the site plan, the revised site plan that we've just recently submitted, and you can see, you know, a lot of the improvements, like I mentioned, have, have already been made on the site plan. I'll use my pointer on this screen. The tapers and the passing lane on Twenty-Four Mile Road have been installed. This is the front parking area, the concrete parking area, with the bio swales in between the parking areas to help with stormwater retention, to allow it to permeate in the site. Here's the garden center itself, the indoor and the outdoor storage areas. Here are the greenhouses in this particular location as we go north on the site. This is actually going from, from south to north. And then here we have the stormwater retention area at this particular location. We've got the west berm. This berm is approximately a six-foot berm that's improved with, with trees, with dense evergreen trees, and then we've got some other improvements proposed, and I'll get into those in just a minute. Next, please. The landscaping uses, that's what we're here primarily to discuss. We believe that they're continued nonconforming uses on the property. In two thousand and nine, this Planning Commission approved Telly's uses and its site plan improvements. The uses approved by the Planning Commission at that time were fallen to one of two categories. Either they were operated by Mueller's in the past to be continued nonconforming uses by Telly's, or they were additional uses that were sought by Telly's at that point in time, in two thousand and nine, and they were approved as part of the overall approval by the Planning Commission. Now, the last bullet points is basically that these, these improvements run with the land, or pardon me, the nonconforming use runs with the land, so it can be, you know, Mr. Papadellis, or, you know, another entity that, that benefits as long as they maintain the nonconforming uses. Your attorney issued a memorandum last week, a legal memorandum that was, that was very well-done. It's got quite a few, I guess, items on the critical path analysis, but we believe that there are three key points here that we want to highlight. The first point is whether the landscape use that's now being requested with the joint operation of Telly's and Youngblood is a use that was included in the approved two thousand and nine Class A nonconforming uses by this Planning Commission, and we believe that it was. The second important inquiry is whether these landscaping uses were previously abandoned, and we do not believe that that was the case, because they were carried on by Mr. Papadellis and Telly's ever since two thousand and nine. And third, does the site plan revision comply with the township's site plan standards? And we, we're telling you that it will comply with the township's standards, we will work with the township in that regard, but we just received the comments on Friday, well after we submitted our site plan, so we haven't had an opportunity to really address those as of yet. Next. The pertinent issue, one key point here that's also highlighted in your legal memo, are that, the pertinent issues here are those of the nonconforming use standards in your ordinance, section seven point fifteen, not of the agricultural uses addressed under the Michigan Right to Farm Act. Next. So I'd like to go through the continuing uses on the property and show you that these were, these were continued by Telly's during its operation, and were not abandoned. Now, if you look at these, we've got, we've got a list of activities along the left-hand column. The next column is whether or not these were engaged in by Mueller's. The next column is whether they're currently engaged in by Telly's, and then the final column on the right is whether the Telly's Youngblood Joint Integrated Operation engages in these activities. So first, we've got retail businesses, and all three of these, these arrangements are quite, you know, in fact, retail businesses. I don't think there's any issue with that. The growing of annuals and perennials, Mueller's didn't really do that, but Telly's has done that since two thousand and nine, and it's proposing to continue that with its partnership with, with Youngblood. Same thing with, with the growing of trees and shrubs. While Mueller's did that on-site, Telly's continued it, and it's going to be continued under this arrangement that we're proposing as well. Now, landscape and garden design and installation, Mueller's did a lot of this, this was primarily their bread and butter. Telly's has done some of it. I'm not going to lie to you, Telly's doesn't, it's not its major business, it's not its number-one operation or source of revenue, but Telly's still does this. They have done it since two thousand and nine, engage in some landscape, garden design, and installation. It's not their forte, which is why they brought Youngblood on board, to basically support these particular activities. Now, product delivery of plants, shrubs, flowers and such, that was done by Mueller's, and it continues to be done by Telly's, and it will continue to be done. The storage of soils and mulch products, either on bins or in pallets, in a bulk quantity, this always has been done on the site. Mueller's did this, I know this is one of the issues that you're probably concerned about. Mueller's did this, this was done, we can show you the bins on the site plan, they're still out there, where Mueller's did this. Telly's has continued to do so, and is proposing to do so with, with Youngblood as well, just them being stored in a different location, which are the bins that are toward the back of the property. And then finally, on this page, we've got trucks and equipment being stored on the property and used throughout the site. Now, Mueller's did this. They traveled throughout the entire site with their trucks and their equipment, installing, planting, harvesting trees and other agricultural products at that point in time. Telly's has continued to do this, and Mueller's, or pardon me, Telly's with Youngblood will continue this operation as well. Next, please. Classes and workshops, while Mueller's didn't offer them, Telly's does offer them and will continue to do so. Now, the site plan improvements, in terms of what we've just been through with the, the site plan that I, that I went through, essentially, Mueller's, as far as we know, didn't really engage in any site plan improvements, didn't come before this, this board and ask for any improvements to be done on its site. We believe its site was operated primarily in similar fashion throughout the years, from looking at the different aerials of the site. Telly's improved it with the two thousand and nine and the two thousand and thirteen site plans, which, you know, as you know, just recently was completed, and Telly's and Youngblood will continue to do so with some additional site plan improvements that I'll get into. Now, in terms of visiting the neighbors, making sure that they understand the site, the improvements on the site, and making modifications to address their concerns, this is something that, that, it's our understanding that Mueller's didn't do, you know, very well and didn't address on a regular basis. They had a debris pile in the back of the site that stayed there and got enlarged. Telly's is much more conscientious. As the neighbors know, Telly's, George has been through the neighborhood. George delivers poinsettias to the neighbors on an annual basis, and a lot of them have George's cell phone number, because he's attuned to their concerns, and is a small businessman who's got to be compatible in this area, he wants to address those concerns. And that's going to continue with the Youngblood operation as well. So we believe that Mueller's had a legal nonconforming use, that Telly's was approved in two thousand and nine as a Class A nonconforming use, and that that use remains being used on the property, even with the Youngblood operation assisting Telly's in performing some of these services. Next. Now, the site features and improvements that we're proposing, next. As you'll see, in blue is really the Youngblood area of use on the, on the property. Let's go to the red for a second. On the, on the bottom of your screen, you see the berm that goes along the, the western property line. That's a six-foot berm with the evergreen trees I was talking about earlier. We're proposing, as one of our site plan improvements, along the, the east property line, that a similar berm be installed, six-foot berm with, with evergreen plantings, and I think in the staff report were, were the ordinance sections that require the buffer and certain requirements of the buffer being adjacent to residential areas. And we're proposing to extend that buffer as well to further south. Doesn't reflect that in the site plan yet, but there are two homeowners there that we've talked to that would, that would like that to be done, and we're, we're going to do that. Now, in the blue area, you've got the, like I said, the primary operational area of, of Youngblood and Company, and essentially, to, to go through this and point to those areas, the dark area, I'll go to the right again, this area is where the, where the bins are for the bulk storage. Here is the barn area, the new barn. So basically, from the rear of the barn, around this area is, is Youngblood's real area of operation. There are two what are called hoop houses right here, which are basically just wire hoops with, you know, like a clear coating on them, somewhat like greenhouses, but less permanent. And then essentially, you've got a gravel area, the gravel area that's here, and that goes around the building circulates the, the barn area. So that, those are the improvements that we're proposing as well on our site plan revision. The berm along the, the property line, approval of the bins, and approval of the gravel area, those are the, those are the main improvements. And then you can see on the, on the north side, there's already trees and quite a bit of screening of the, of the neighbors to the north. Next, please. So here are some photos, this is a little dark, but here are some photos of the site. If you haven't been there, I wanted to highlight these. This is the barn from the south side, looking north. Next. Here's another photo of the barn, it shows the loading dock, furthest away from the neighbors to the, to the east of the property. As you see, that's on the west edge of the building, and that's one of Telly's delivery trucks. Next. Here are the concrete bins where the, the landscape material is on the north of the property. This is, if you look at this, basically, the, in the foreground would be the building, the barn, then you've just got a gravel area for, for trucks and equipment, and then you've got the retention pond further beyond here and the screening to the north. Next. This is really hard to see, but these are the hoop houses I was mentioning. As you can see, these are just temporary wire structures that are up, and they'll be covered, and basically, what you do is you store, you store plant materials here, so they can continue to grow. They're not planted in the ground, but this, this is a storage area for those. Next. Here you can see the retention pond, and this was taken just, you know, after the rainfall on Saturday, so it's, it's, it's pretty much, I wouldn't say full, but it's got quite a bit of water in it. That was- That was, that was just dug out and it's got capacity, as you can see, along the edges for, for additional water retention. And there's, next, there's one more photo of the, of the retention basin from the other side, from the west side. So that's retention basin I mentioned, has been engineered and designed to, to township standards. And we'll verify that with the township. Next, please. Here's the front of Telly's. Here's their sign, the parking lot and what it looks like, the concrete parking lot in the front. Next. Here's another view of it, looking from the road toward the greenhouses and the retail building. You see the area between the park, the island area between the parking stalls and rows. That's the bioswale area that I was talking about earlier for, you know, for stormwater to permeate through the soil, which is a very permeable soil because it's a sand-type soil. It's not clay in that area. Next. Here's the road with, you have a hard time seeing this, but the improvements that were made, the, the tapers along the entrance. And then on the far side of the road to the left, as you're looking at it, is the, is the passing lane that was installed by Telly's. Next. Here's the berm that already exists along the west property line. You can see that the berm is, is, it's hard to see with this exposure, but basically here's the berm in this area. This, this is a, a drive path. The berm, you've got sufficient trees on the top, the evergreens, which are very luscious to, to block out noise and light pollution. And essentially the neighbors are on the opposite side of that. Next. So I'd like to show this in terms of a couple of dimensions. If you look, that existing berm I was talking about, basically these property owners along this line to the, to the west, the back of their homes are no closer than 125 feet from any buildings or structures on Telly's property. So they've got 125 foot of, of separation. On the other side where we're proposing the improvements, basically this, this is older, but the barn is right here and the gravel drive would be right here. So, and, and essentially the, the gravel area here, the storage bins in, in this area. Essentially here you have 250 feet, double the amount on the, on the west side, between the rear of the closest house and where the activities are on the Telly's site. So you've got that much clearance and that much separation that's, that's twice as much as existing on the opposite side. But of course, our neighbor concerns, and we expected that. Mr. Papadellis and Mr. Youngblood, excuse the typo, they spoke with the adjacent neighbors. And they went to 22 adjacent residential neighbors who actually bordered this property. There are 22 single-family homes. They spoke with 19 of those neighbors. 15 of those neighbors were not opposed to the proposed use and the site plan improvements. And there's also a commercial neighbor to the east who was not opposed. Next. This basically shows you the neighbors that they, they spoke with. The red stars are the neighbors that they sat down with and, and explained these improvements to. The neighbors in the, the blue were people who weren't home, so they were not able to reach those people. So this, these are where the houses are that surround the site. And these are the residents that they approached to make sure that they explain the situation, the site plan concerns, the uses that were going to be out there. And essentially, they did that for the purpose of being able to address those concerns. Because they know that there are going to be issues and they're very sensitive to that. You've got this 17-acre parcel that's in the midst of a single-family residential zone. So we understand that and we want to be good neighbors. So that's what they did. Next, please. So the neighbor concerns that were raised and the solutions that, that we are proposing are, there are nine of them. First, the headlights shining into windows from vehicles. And we believe that the berm and the evergreens on top of the berm will, will take care of that, just like they did on the west property line. Number two, the noise of blowers and power washers beyond normal working hours was a concern that was raised by certain neighbors. We think the berm and the trees will also mitigate that particular concern as well, as it has done on the other side. Also, we're going to restrict landscape-related work, such as, you know, these noisy activities, to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., just on weekdays. Because Youngblood's operation does not operate on weekends. And we're willing to, to live with, with those restrictions. Number three, winter snow and ice services that will result in noise pollution all hours of the night was a concern that was raised. We will commit to not doing any snow and ice removal and providing those services. Number four, the berm maintenance and mowing along the property lines. Youngblood will commit to doing that to ensure that these are kept in a, a neat and proper fashion. Next. There were questions about the pile of sand created from the digging of the pond. And this sand will be removed from the site. It's just recent, we need a little bit of time to do this. So, so that pile of sand will be going away. Number six, the dust and odor control from the mulch in the soils was another concern that was raised. And we believe from our experience on the, on the opposite side of the property with the berm, that that essentially is going to, to take care of this concern. That and the fact that the neighbors on the east side are further away from the activities than the neighbors on the west side are. So the, the proposed improvements will be further away than the existing improvements. Next. There was a concern about the removal of dead pines along the east property line. We've already taken care of that and removed the dead trees. Number eight is adding additional length to the berm on the west property line. That's the existing berm. And we will extend that to the north per the request of a, of a homeowner there. And then as I mentioned, number nine, adding the, adding to the length of the berm on the east property line. We're certainly willing to do that and we'll amend our site plan to do so. Next. So essentially, these are the reasons, you know, Mr. Papadellis is a small businessman. He's trying to continue an operation which we think provides value to Shelby Township. We believe that, that the neighbors are generally happy with, with him and his operations and his, his being very conscientious of their concerns. However, he needs to continue to adapt his business and be flexible and be able to, to provide the best service and a full-service array of, of plants, materials, and services for his customers. This is why he's looking at bringing in Youngblood and Company. Not to start a new use, which wasn't used on the site before, but basically to continue an existing use. A use that wasn't his forte and Youngblood can do better. So that's why we're, we're in front of you this evening with this proposal. We hope that you will consider approval. And then just, just one more house. Actually, I think I'm good for this point in time, but I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Papadellis, who has a few additional concerns. And he'd like to talk to you for a couple of minutes, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Make sure you sign in too for me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is George Papadellis. Do I need to give my address?
Yes.
3301 John R. Troy, Michigan. I've been on the site since 2009, made a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of improvements. We do some things better than the Mueller's did. I think a lot of things. We've certainly invested a lot of money, put a lot of time and effort into site plans and engineering. And one thing that I wanted to do better, based on the demands of the community, was offer a better design, better installation services than, than what I do and the way I do it right now. Our Youngblood and Company has been installing my products for years. I met him years ago. And it just seemed like a really good union of both of our talents to provide this service to the community better than, than we do now. And every year I try to do things a little bit better than I did before, the year before, whether it's how we plant our, along the road, or, you know, clean up the parking lot or whatever it is. So we try to make improvements as we go along. And this is another one that I, I hope you can allow us to offer. I do want to throw in that, that the hoop houses that my attorney described to you are not to be covered with plastic, they'd be covered with shade cloth. And it's just an area where you keep the plants until, sort of a staging area where you keep the plants until, until they get loaded onto a truck and go to a specific site. We do something like that now in a less formal environment. And it's just sort of separate and protected. It's not heated or covered with plastic or anything like that, that. It's a shade structure, or shade structures. Also, there's going to be a lot of comments probably on the, the site plan. I have submitted many site plans with every detail you could ever want included, and we've carried them out thoroughly. So if there's something that I think I'm pretty good at is whipping together a good site plan. Now, we're using AEW, which is a township, well, the future township engineering company, so they are experts in the field. I know I'm forgetting something really important. But hopefully I'll think of it here in just a minute. Now, I can't think of it right now. Sorry about that. I had it and it left me. Oh, I, I have, I, I do want to throw in that I do visit all my neighbors annually. I, I come by like about the day before Christmas Eve to hand out a poinsettia. And that's my opportunity to meet with everyone, see who's moved in, see who's moved out, see if anyone has anything good or bad to say that we can discuss things. And I've been doing that ever since I bought the property, other than one year when my dad was in the hospital. And I, I think that kind of goes to say, I've always tried to be a good neighbor and listen and, and help people out if they had any concerns. And I think that's about all I have right now.
Mr. Papadellis, while you're there, a couple of questions.
Yes.
Just, what, what are you currently storing in the barn?
There is a lot of plastic and a lot of soil. All of our tools are in there and all sorts of different types of equipment. Occasionally, the truck, tractor, mower, everything that I used to store in my head house. That's sort of the main central greenhouse that runs down the center of the production greenhouses. Which is a perfect environment for growing plants, but a waste of space if you're storing plastic or soil or big equipment that, where you can't grow plants. So the barn, which, oh, that's what I wanted to add in. The, the plan that was submitted in 2013 had the barn on it. It had the improvements to the road. It had the, the concrete parking lot, the drainage system. It had the pad to the south of the barn and to the north of the barn. And it had the improvements to the, the enlargement of the pond. A lot of that just got done in the last few months. And I think while all that was going on, the neighbors were like, what's going on over here? All this, there's all this digging and all this noise and all this dust. So, and, and from what I understand, they were calling the township, saying, what, what is this giant barn that's going up? But the barn was improved, approved in 2013. The township didn't have answers for them. Not initially, anyway. But that was on the plan and we, we finished that and we finished the pond. There's only two things that I can think of that I need to finish from the 2013 site plan. You want to know what those are?
Sure.
Well, one is there, there is a, a storm sewer that passes underneath the barn that has to be diverted and then filled in because they don't want any voids underneath the barn. So that's one thing I need to do. And then the other thing is the fence that goes around the pond. Half of the pond does not have, where we expanded it, doesn't have the new fence yet. We just finished that a couple of weeks ago, so it's, there's tons, tons of work to do all the time.
I think we can admit that you are good at whipping up a site plan. It's just a problem of fulfilling it, carrying it out, that's the issue. Getting back to the barn. Would it be okay if I or any other commissioner or someone from the township comes out and takes a look inside the barn to make sure that what's in there is what you just said?
Oh, absolutely.
So we can come out anytime and do that?
Well, during normal business hours, sure.
Okay. That's good to know. You, you've used Youngblood for a number of years. Where do they operate from now?
When I, when, when you say I've used Youngblood, they've been installing my product for a number of years.
Okay. Where, where are they, where are they at currently?
Currently, they're at my site. Yeah. And they also have an office in Rochester. Before that, they had a yard in Rochester. And as my need grew, it seemed like a perfect union.
We'll see. All right, Julie, we'll go over to you first before I go to the floor. You can give us your report on what you've discovered on the property.
Okay. Mr. Gaber did a great job of explaining the use and the proposal of the use. I think the question here becomes, in 2009, when this use was allowed to continue, I looked through the minutes and it said, the site has been used as a retail nursery. No mention of a landscape company or business running out of there, even though Mueller's had landscaping in, in, in its name. Now, to continue on, I know we've had a number of comments and complaints from the residents with, since the last site plan. I know a lot of it had to do with the retention area not being completed and they were having issues, water issues with their basements as well. So more recently was with the landscape company operating on the site and being there in the early morning hours before 7:00 a.m. and continuing on till after 7:00 p.m. So I guess those are some, some of the issues. There's noise and, and dust with the equipment running back there and, you know, it's smell. Some of the neighbors have complained about smells, but I guess, sure, sure. So there's been a number of nuisances that we've, the township has received complaints about. So I guess Mr. Gaber is contending that this was a Class A non-conforming use. And, and this is the planning commission's role in to decide if this use is different than, than the existing use and if it would be allowed. Now, there's four standards and the one uses to consider is, is the proposed use similar in operational characteristics as the former non-conforming use. There's no increase in the intensity of the use of the land, building, or structures involved. And such change in use will have a less detrimental effect or less negative impact on the neighboring properties than the existing non-conforming use it is replacing. And that the proposed use, although inappropriate to a uniform zoning pattern, is desirable and useful in pursuant of the public interest, or is more appropriate to the zoning district than the existing non-conforming use. So those are the issues that, that the board members need to consider when this use is being proposed.
Any questions of the planner before we go to the floor? We're going to go to the floor first and we'll come back. Format for the public hearing? Well, now we're going to open it to the public. This will be the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on this request. Anybody from the floor wishes to speak, they can come on down, do so at this time?
You get, you get three minutes and I'm going to give you a 30-second warning when you-
Mr. Flynn has volunteered to be our timekeeper, so. And after you speak, this is more reminding me-
My name is Sarah Karati. I live at 53191 Shelby Road. I've been there since 1988. When Mr. Mueller had his operation, every spring, our property got flooded. And I have an acre from the back of my house to the back of my property. Now, we took it upon ourselves to plant several large adult spruces in the back of our property to prevent noise and hopefully stop some of the flooding. Well, since George has been in town, I have no flooding in my yard. It's been a blessing. I think Mr. Mueller used to pump all of his water in our yard and hopefully it ran down the side of my property into the ditches, which we don't have anymore. The berm will help with noise. I hear nothing and see nothing with our pine trees in the back. So I can tell the people, I'm compassionate for the fact that they hear noise. And I'm right in the back of all the operation and the lights. But we took it upon ourselves at our own expense to prevent those things. And I'm sure with Mr. George doing the same thing, it would be a big improvement. The only concerns I have are this. What about pollution? We all know that pesticides are an issue. And I'd like to have more assurance that toxic pesticides aren't used because after all, it's our family, our yard, our animals, our children, our grandchildren. Secondly, I'm considered, I don't understand how the whole zoning package works. Because what happens if he chooses to put a different type of business on that property? Can he do that? Or is it restricted within the confines of the agricultural or landscaping? That might be your address. I think that it could be an improvement to our community. I don't have the concerns that the other people have. Now, I have a sidebar for all of you. I want to thank all of you for your service. Our community is getting better and stronger. But most importantly, I have a new sidewalk. And the new sidewalks were a pain in the neck and it was a sore thumb for a very long time. But when Mike and I drove down Shelby Road today, it is actually quite beautiful. The sidewalks enhance our property. It looks very, very nice. And I see people walking their dogs and kids riding their bikes and walking and families going past our house. And it's- and kids riding their bikes and walking, and families going past our house. And it's to me a blessing. So thank you for your time. I don't think this is going to be a problem. George has followed through with everything. I appreciate that. Since he's been there, my yard doesn't flood, and that would stay for a month. And before they had all this zoning, nobody cared, and Mr. Mueller got away with it. We actually found pipes running from his property into our property and dumping water in our property because he thought that was-
Time's up, ma'am.
Huh?
Time's up.
You know that?
I said your, your time's up.
Your time is up. So make sure you sign, ma'am, make sure you sign in. Sign in, please. Yes, thank you. Come on down, sir.
Gerald Butler, 53261 Shelby Road. I've also been since the mid-'80s. And is it possible to bring up the site plan?
Rick, can you get the site plan up on the, okay, they're working on it. One second.
Okay.
Right there.
You know, all this comparison between Mueller's and Telly's, in my estimation, there is no comparison. I want to go over and show you where Mueller's stopped. Yeah.
Okay, sir, you got it. Go ahead.
Mueller's worked out of 24 Mile Road, and-
This is where Jerry lives.
Well, that's where I live, sure. But from there back, going north, was nothing but trees, beautiful trees and deer running around before Telly's came in. Now, let me talk about Telly's for a minute. When he did come in and take over Mueller's, I was thrilled. I was very happy that he did, because obviously we didn't want condominiums or whatever else. But I've always had like a sanctuary for 35 years. But you keep comparing Mueller's to Telly's. It's not even close. Everything that Mueller's had was, was up in front, everything moving out of 24 Mile Road. We never knew anything about any landscaping. Well, farther even nothing than that. But now, of course, you can see what's going on with all the development in the back and all the noise and the trucks and whatever have you. I don't know how much time I got. The barn, I noticed when you talked about the barn, when your attorney talked about the barn, and you told, you said that you store stuff in there, whatever else. Are you running space to Youngblood?
Yes.
You are. And that's actually their shop, correct?
Yes, right here.
Right. Just wanted to make that clear. Now, back to the smell, and while you're saying that, that, you know, the smell is from the bins 250 feet to the house, are you telling us we can't go out in the yard? I mean, what difference does that make? The fence is right there. That's our yard. That's what, we bought the property to have a nice yard to live in with our kids. So I don't know why you're saying 250 feet to the house, but I don't get that. Plus, the wind, the predominant wind comes from the west, which pushes the peat moss into our backyard. Can't read my own writing. As far as your walk around the neighborhood, I wish you would have done that a year ago and let us know something. I mean, we were in the dark all this time. We didn't know anything about the 2013 approval, and the next thing we know, there's a load of trusses in the backyard and all this, all this construction.
Time's up, sir.
That's all?
Time's up.
Time's up.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Yep, thank you. Come on down, sir.
Hello, my name's Ryan Silk. I live at 52786 Pappy Lane. I'm on the south side of 24 Mile, right across the street. My concern with the landscaping is the amount of traffic. I get a lot of traffic by my house. I'm the first house off 24 Mile. So I was just curious as to what type of equipment will be in and out of there. Like, is there large trucks, gravel haulers, things like that, or is it more of a basic tractor, trailer-type vehicles? So everything else I've seen is, has been good. The improvements to the road and things like that, the passing lane has been helpful, but my concern is with the traffic. So that was all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. I don't think we're talking about roads and tapers and swales. I think there's a bigger issue here, whether we can do this on that property. Come on down, sir.
Good evening. My name's Corby Mason. I live at 53401 Shelby Road. This whole situation has actually made me physically ill. I won't repeat the items I listed in the email I sent Julia Misich to give you for the planning board review. I just have to add a few things. George and Ryan came to my house. I asked them to leave, but Ryan kept on talking. I told them that they have already demonstrated what kind of neighbors they intend to be, and please leave me alone, and that the township would decide. But he kept on talking, and these men will push and push until they get what they want. Now, the township needs to put themselves in our place. How would you like to have this noise behind your house and then hear it in your house? I live on Shelby Road since 1985. When you live on Shelby Road, you know that you're going to hear traffic from the road, but you live in the back of the house. The back of the house is quiet. You have a backyard. It's your, it's your place of quiet, and it doesn't bother you, the road. But when you're in your house and you think you hear someone pulling up in your driveway, and it's coming from the nursery, it gets to be annoying because this lot is no longer, it's no longer, it's a trucking yard. So, so how'd you like to have that noise behind your house and hear it in your house? Or get in your favorite chair and sit outside, only to smell a foul smell so bad you'd think an animal died? And once this repeatedly happened, I started noticing it was coming from the piles that these semi-trucks were dumping. And mind you, these semi-trucks that come in, I don't have ever seen peat moss being delivered, but it doesn't take a minute to unload it. It's not a dump truck. It's an enclosed semi because it stinks, and they have to push it out. And it takes over a half an hour to unload it. So the whole time the truck is running, this truck is running and running and running. I don't want to hear it. So I started to notice it was coming from the cement dividers. Now, we knew we had a nursery behind us, and we knew how most of the noise was going to be inside the greenhouse and minor noises. But what went on this summer is exactly how they plan on doing business. I don't care what they tell you. Landscapers work from 6:00 a.m. till dark, till whenever, motors running, trucks loading and loading. And I'm not speaking about the noise coming from the week that they expanded the pond, which incidentally should have been done three years ago, according to the site plan. AEW told them-
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. Okay. You know, I lived behind the nursery since 1985 when Mueller's owned the nursery. It was pretty much a tree farm, and the trees were out there pulling a tree out once in a while. Today, it's more like a truckyard for a landscape business. Mr. Papadopoulos can't compare the noise to Ryan Youngblood's trucks. The planning board has to stand up for our rights as residents as to what's appropriate use. So the best you can do is say no. And remember, you don't have to decide our fate today. It can go to another court, to a higher court. So say yes to, say yes will hurt our quality of life. It'll impact the value of our homes, because no one's going to want to live behind a trucking yard. And George is going to tell you what he wants us to hear. Once this landscape trucking company is allowed to use the site for special land use, it opens the door for more special land use. I see in the future that'll be a Haley Stone gravel trucks coming in and out, and that's all I can see. So please, let the vote show you said no and protect your neighbors' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Make sure you sign in. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come on down, sir. We'll get you first. We'll get you. Come on down. Okay, come on down.
Do you guys want a minute warning instead of the 30-second warning? What would be, what would be better? Okay, I'll give you a minute warning because that was a long wrap-up thought there. Okay, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, Ken Mueller, 53362 Briar. I live on the other side of where all this is happening. No relation to Rudy.
I was going to ask, okay.
But I've lived there since 1990, actually, in that era. I enjoy George. George is a wonderful man. He tells you how it is and what happens. I have no complaints whatsoever what he does. He's very attentive to the neighborhood. He hires at least six or seven neighborhood kids when they're in season to work. My daughter's one of them. So I have no problems with them all. So that's all. And I was, they were going to build a house behind my house because I'm at the far end of that property. And with what Rudy did with this planning, he wanted to have a compound or something with his family to live there and no access to the road, and they were going to cut through Pappy Lane, and, you know, and it worked out. We're happy. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sign in, please.
Good evening. My name's Robert Marks. I live on the border of Telly's, 53321 Shelby Road. I'm directly right behind these hoop houses. The nuisance noise, I'm continuously hearing what my fellow neighbor Corby, Gerald, and multiple neighbors down the row are saying. I was involved in walking the neighborhood, getting 46 signatures against the commercial property going onto the site. I ran into one neighbor that couldn't make a decision at the point of me knocking on the door, and the rest of the neighbors, that entire circle, when he had the stars up onto the board, I walked all those houses. All of those houses said, no, they don't want it. They don't want the commercial property there. There may be a couple that I missed that aren't on the signature sheet that just weren't home, weren't home, or they couldn't make a decision right at that moment. As far as the west side of the property, it was a beautiful picture that was shown, but if you go on that street on the west side, the neighborhood street, and look over at Telly's, there's nothing but dead trees on the backside of those beautiful spruces that have been hacked at the top and left dead. Youngblood is operating in that barn right now, as they spoke about. His equipment's in there, his employee break room's in there. They're running from approximately 6:15 a.m. to 8:30, 9 o'clock p.m. during the warmer months. They were all the way almost up until 9 o'clock, running power washers from 7 to 9 o'clock continuously, not stopping. The noise level, the nuisance, is insane. The property values in this area are going to decrease with a commercial property in our backyards. Again, how do we just come in here, drop commercial items onto the property without approval from you? We do what we want on the property now, and later, we're going to still continue to do what we want because we're not able to, to monitor the property like we'd like to monitor the property being what it's zoned.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Thank you. Come on down, ma'am.
Hello.
Pull the mic down so they can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Mazurkowitz. I'm at 53381 Shelby Road. I live right next door to Rob Marks, and so my home is right behind that concrete bin, as well as the concrete, the gravel area and the barn. I look at my kitchen window, and what do I see? I see a three-story barn that was never there before. What do I see? I see other, I look to the, to the north, I see big piles of topsoil and manure, and the smell just keeps coming over. I know we've gone over this over and over again. But I lived in my home for 45 years, and I've seen much change since George brought, bought Mueller's property, but nothing like this past year. My quality of life has deteriorated greatly since George brought that landscaping company, and that's the key, the landscaping company. George's work, everything he's done with his, with his business has been no problems at all. And yes, has he, is he a fine gentleman? Does he want to be friendly or whatever? That's fine. But what is a commercial company doing dropping into a agriculture-zoned area? Now, we talk about Mueller's back and forth, back and forth. Two wrongs do not make a right. And I'm just hoping that all of you take all of this into consideration with your power and our residents as to what is the right thing to do. He could take his business and keep it in Rochester, and then just buy the plants and take them and take care of it. Otherwise, no, what is George doing? He wants to increase his business. He wants to put this business here, work out this business, and then the, all the residents get the residue of what's left over. So please, thank you for your consideration. And I'm just hoping that it's up, I'm hoping that you will do the right thing, given all of what you've heard and seen, as well as listening to the law. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on down, sir.
Hi, Michael Mays. I'm at 53471 Shelby. So I'm at the same side as all these neighbors towards the back of the property. I've only been there since 2009, so about 10 years. And that was one of the big selling points of my house is the space behind it. I don't see the barn and all that as much as these people do, my neighbors here. But being at the back of the property, I can hear the trucks running. It's not overly noisy, but I'm five houses away. If it was right behind me, it would definitely bother me. And like they're saying with property values, I agree, letting that run back there will probably decline property values. It's, I just, I don't see it as a added value for us at all. Coming from their point of view with it right behind them, I, yeah, it would bother the hell out of me too. That's what I have to say. So I support where they're coming.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you sign in. Anyone else?
One more.
Come on down, sir.
Steve Kavanaugh, and I lived there since I've been one. So I know Rudy, and I know what they used to do. The woodchips have been there. Big boulders have been there. They sprayed the bug killer with, it looked like fire hoses back in the day. So if you're talking sprays or pesticides, Rudy did that too. All this stuff was done before. They seem to have moved it to the other side, though, because I live on Briar. Now it's on the other side. Every complaint, anybody ever done with George, he solved it for me. The big dead trees, they're all gone. The big dirt pile in my backyard, I don't care. I like it. They can leave that dirt there as long as they want. So I got no complaint with George. Great neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you sign in, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, do you want to wait to bring him up when we're done? Are you Mr. Youngblood?
Hello?
Want to finish with the floor and then-
Let's wait, finish with the floor. I didn't come on up, okay? Not right now. We'll finish with the floor, then you can come on up. Anyone else from the floor? Want to speak on this? Once? Twice? Nothing? Okay, come back up to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
I've been a customer of Telly's since I moved to the township. I've bought a lot of shrubs and flowers and mulch and things from you over the years, and I think Telly's, by and large, has been a good neighbor. Unfortunately, this situation is, in my mind- Uh, unfortunately, this situation, um, is, in my mind, not acceptable. Uh, w, we've worked very hard, at least since I've been on the township board, to end the practice of do whatever you want and ask for forgiveness. Um, Glenn Winn, Miss Missages' predecessor, worked very hard on that, and Julie, I know, has worked very hard on that as well, and the fact is, is that use was abandoned, in, in, in our opinion. And you can't just do stuff and then come in here and expect us to play, but play along. Um, and this is, this use is very disturbing to the neighbors. I, I appreciate their complaints. Uh, I think that, uh, the greenhouse part of it's great. I, it's always been great. Customer service is great, the products are great. Um, but this is just an unacceptable use, uh, for that residential district. And again, I can't emphasize this enough, and I thought we had got this message across in Shelby Township, and that no more doing what you want and asking for forgiveness. It's just not gonna be tolerated. We're gonna end up in court on this one, I'm afraid, but, um, but that's, that's why we pay our taxes, and that's why we have lawyers, but, cuz this is, this is, in my opinion, not gonna happen anymore. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, I have a couple comments. It's clear to me, when I listen to, when I read all the information and listen to the conversation, and I appreciate the residents coming out, because we see a different picture from you than we did from their little unscientific survey with the red dots, red stars. It's very clear that even though he's been, you've been doing the work there for the last year, prior to that is, you've not done landscaping work out of that property since two thousand and nine. So, it has been abandoned, not just one year, not two years, but ten years. One of the issues of a non-conforming use is, has it been stopped for a year? Well, it's been stopped ten times that amount. So, clearly, we were going to add the landscaping property, landscaping work on this property, it would be an expansion of a non-conforming use. Got some real concerns with that, some real problems with that. Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Mrs. Moore.
I have a couple, a couple things I wanted to just mention. Um, back in two thousand and nine, when you came before us, the hours of operation, they varied, of course, from season to season, but it was said that they were, your hours would start at eight AM and go till nine, and then at different times, it would, they would start at nine AM and go to eight. Um, hearing that you're operating a business, um, at six thirty or seven o'clock in the morning, I mean, that's just uncalled for to the residents, as far as noise. Um, the other thing is, I had a question for you. Are there any, um, diesel fuel or oil? Um, is anything stored on your property for the equipment, for the maintain, maintenance of the machinery now? All the landscaping materials? For the trucks? For the bulldozer, for?
Are you, you referencing fuel products?
Fuel products, oils?
Yeah, so, I'll answer the question. The answer is yes. Absolutely, there is. And I'll, I'll cover that when I, when it's my turn to talk.
Okay. And then I had one other comment that I wanted to make. As I was driving down Briar, I noticed the berm, but I noticed there were, it was dead, desolate. There were no, um, tree plantings, and the ones that were there, it was spotty. There was really no coverage, there was not a green barrier, and that's what we had hoped, when you came before us in two thousand and twelve, I believe it was, um, that you had told us that that's what you were going to do. And I just did not see that, so, those are my comments.
Okay. I'll respond to that first.
Name and address for the record, sir, please.
My name is Ryan Youngblood. I own R. Youngblood Company, and I'm standing here behalf of the Planning Commission to speak with you guys. Um, in response to your first comment there about the, uh, the trees, if someone could pull up the photos of the trees that were, the, of the berm that was provided, I think you'll see, quite frankly, the exact opposite of what you, what you just described. So, I'm not sure if that can be pulled back up on the slideshow. Um, I got a picture in my phone I could show you, but the, the trees are, I do landscape for a living, and the trees, I would rate a twelve on a ten scale, and they're gorgeous. They're healthy. I'm not sure if maybe you were seeing the trees that we removed in the last week that were declined, that were never, never part of the berm. Those are actually just in trees when, when, uh, George purchased the property. So, the berm itself, I feel, is extremely attractive, over the point that I did speak with, along with George, numerous neighbors on that road, that were extremely satisfied with the berm. So, again, I, I really encourage you to maybe take a look back at the berm and see, you know, what your new findings are. With that being said, I'd like to open up what I'd like to address, um, on behalf. I guess first and foremost, I wanna thank you guys for your time. Again, my name's Ryan Youngblood. Things have, things have got started off on a bad foot, and I apologize for that. My goal was entered into Shelby Township as a business owner, that's been in business for twenty-two years, a tax-paying entity, to be successful and a positive attribute to the township. Back to your point, Mr. Flynn, as far as George or myself doing something, asking for permission later, I wanna strongly address that position. Number one is that we feel, and we still feel, that the non-conforming use, Class A, was a continuation, not an addition. All the way to the point that when I moved in the property, and when George allowed me to move in the property, we made a sublease agreement, nothing was done with ill intention. In fact, that's why we came on so strong, because we thought one hundred percent that zoning was exactly correct. Otherwise, we wouldn't have done what we've done, and in the nature of we did it. So, I apologize on my behalf and George's for the impact and the negative standpoint that we've, that we've, uh, put place on to you guys, the commissioners, the planning director, and the residents. We agree that it could've gone a lot better, but again, I wanna emphasize, we did not do this with ill intention. I am in the back of that barn. We're not hiding that. I am operating, and Julie and Tim would know that I'm operating. In fact, gave me permission to continue until we get through this. So, first and foremost, or, on, on that note, again, we apologize. With that being said, I wanna make sure that we understand that we are working on accommodating to make sure that we don't cause a negative impact. And I think what's happening tonight is we're all looking at what happened in the first year, instead of what we are planning to do moving forward. Two things are working against us. Number one, there was major construction taking place for site plan modifications. A lot of noise and a lot of distractions. I fully understand that. Number two is that we didn't know that it was, it was not a non, a continuing use. Now we know that. We clearly know that. So, our plan, as we walk around each neighbor, is to fully accommodate any concerns of a negative impact. Again, my goal after twenty years of business is to continue. My goal after twenty years of business is to be a good part in the community, not the opposite. And I apologize the way it started. This summer, again, we talked about, there was a lot of construction, um, and we are planning on making a lot of combinations. I wanna address the hours directly. The hours of my operation have been longer, as they've explained. There's been some additions to what they've explained. Um, but again, in accommodations, my plan is to hear their voice and respond accordingly. If we're gonna reduce our hours, we will happily reduce our hours. Again, our goal is to be a positive impact to the residents and the community. The berm will address, I feel, all the concerns that have been put placed. And again, I wish there was more homeowners here on the west side of the property line that gave me great confidence to even come tonight, because of their response was so positive on the berm.
The happy people don't ever show up.
Yeah, unfortunately. Now, on that note, that leads me into, uh, my next point, which I think is extremely crucial, that you guys have strong ears for this point. I have been operating business for twenty-two years successfully. You don't do that by being a dishonest man. George and I spent two days, I sacrificed a Sunday for my family, to walk around and talk to every single neighbor that shows in the chart that was put, put up there. If you take those addresses, 'cause I did it today, you take the addresses that have the stars on there, and you align to the star, the address that's signed on the forty-six people that they had petitioned, they do not align. Not one single person turned, turned on us. Every person that told us, fifteen people, and three people not home, and four opposed, every, one of those people, fifteen people, still stand strong and support the operation. So, I encourage you, before you make a, a quick conclusion on that statement, and listen only to the body of the residents, that if you align those addresses, those fifteen people we spoke with, plus one business owner, is in support of our, of our operation, cuz they see that we're trying to accommodate. Another important point in that is, more than half of those fifteen people are what they're, are the result of experience in the berm. Those people, I would say, would join these people back in two thousand and thirteen, because they didn't have the berm, and they all brought that up. They all brought up that they were, their concerns directly aligned with their concerns. We all have compassion for these concerns, but the berm solved it. They're not here. And like you say, the happy people don't show up, unfortunately, but if they're not happy, they would've been here. They're not here. And my closing to this is that, again, I apologize on my behalf, I apologize on George's behalf. And in fact, I apologize to Julie when she entered the property. I said, "Julie and Tim, I do this for a living. I request variances and ZBAs and all that stuff from, from my landscape architecture. I know this. I did not know that this use was not a continuous use of what you guys are, what we're debating here. If I know that, I would not have brought a negative impact to the community and to my name. And I'm here, again, my name is Ryan Youngblood, and I wanna stand public record, that I've been in business for twenty-two successful years. My goal is to continue. I have an outstanding reputation from clients, employees, local, state, and federal governments coming tax-paying individual. I'm here to accommodate any concerns that take place. It's my hope and my goal that we walk out of here at some point where everyone is happy. And that's my closing, is that my goal is that we can find a way that where everyone is happy. If we can't, then understand, because I will happily go somewhere else where I wanna be a positive influence and a positive addition to the community that I run my business. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody, um?
One more thing. Do you answer her question? She asked the first question, and I addressed it. And I think it's very important, there are fuel tanks on the, on the, uh, the property. No one's hiding that. Part of the problem we're having right now is that we had a year of construction and a year of misunderstanding. And to the respect of Julie and Tim, they came into the property, and they said, "Hey, can you please put a pause on using the back property? Put a pause on making loud noises as much as you can, okay?" And fuel tanks, um, structures, all that kinda stuff, berms, um, anything that we can do to accommodate these, these individuals, we can't, I would classify it as we've had our hands tied. We can't do it until we get through this. Once we get through this, fuel tanks, we put where they need to be put, or removed from the site. Berms, we built, all combinations will, will take place, so that we can run an operation that's part of Shelby Township where everyone is satisfied. So, that's my, my appeal to you as a board members, um, is to understand that you got two individuals that own companies, have started businesses, and are here to accommodate whatever we can do to make the citizen, the residents, you guys, and the whole community happy. Thank you.
As I was starting, you might, you can have a seat, but you can come back up and talk, but?
The floor's closed, sir.
No, I know. The, um, nobody is challenging your dishonesty, or your honesty. Nobody's calling you a dishonest employer, I wanna make that very clear. We'd love to have you in Shelby Township, and a business like yours really belongs in an LM or an HM district, with a special land use, not a residential district. Now, the, um, when we look at all of this, I'd like to make a few points for the record. You sent, your legal counsel said correspondence indicating that you want to, quote, "to offer some additional services Mueller's Landscaping previously provided." So, you said it's continual use, but yet it's additional use. Part of that, well, let me get into this, too. The planning commission has to answer certain questions, when we look at whether or not we can expand a non-conforming use. Was the landscaping use that has now requested a use that was included in the two thousand and nine approval for Class A non-conforming status for the nursery? Number one. Number two, if the landscaping use was included in the two thousand and nine Class A determination, does the current site plan revision comply with the site plan review standards of the Shelby Township ordinance, Article six point oh? Had the landscaping use which is now proposed been abandoned under the criteria set forth in Section seven one five oh? What that says, bear with me, part of that is cessation of non-conforming use for a period of one year. It's back to what I said earlier, we're talking ten years. If landscaping use has been abandoned, does it constitute a change or alteration of the current Class A non-conforming nursery use, which should be or should not be allowed by making written findings and applying the criteria set forth in Section seven one five E four as follows? Is the proposed use similar in operational characteristics as the former current non-conforming use? Is there an increase in the intensity of the use of the land, building, or structure involved? Will the change in use have a less detrimental effect or less negative impact on neighboring property than the existing non-conforming use it is replacing? And, is the proposed use, although inappropriate to a uniform zoning pattern, desirable and useful in pursuit of the public interest, or is it more appropriate to the zoning district than the existing non-conforming use? Number six, if the change in use is allowed, are there additional conditions and safeguards which should be required in accord with the purpose and intent of the Shelby Township ordinance, inclusive of upgrading the premises to comply as nearly as practicable with requirements of this ordinance? So, those are things that need to be stated on the record before we make our determination later on. Clearly, it gets back to, in my opinion, do we, does this property allow, i- is it allowed to expand the non-conforming use? Does it meet these standards? And again, I get back to the ten years of not doing it, and typically, if I look at something and I haven't done it for ten years, that means I've given up on it, and I've abandoned it. So, it's been abandoned. And by adding it, does it meet these criteria? It's a good question. I think we'll answer it later, but I wanted to state that for the record. Any other commissioners have any comments? No other concluding remarks? Come on up, Mr. Gable.
Well, I'd, I'd like to clarify one thing. I was doing design and installation when I was at the Troy location, and I continue to design and installation here at the Shelby location. I personally do designs every year. I could walk you around neighborhoods all over the place and show you some of the stuff that I've done. I personally do installations, sometimes by myself, sometimes with a crew, um, every year, um, and, uh, we have equipment for that. We have augers, we have trailers, we have trucks. All, all of that is necessary for us to, to complete those tasks. Do I like it? No. I'd rather be at the front door, greeting every customer, helping them all the time. But, um, and, and that's where Ryan comes in. The, the demands of the, the community, the neighborhood, they want more, they want more, they want more. I can only do so much. I, you know, I'd rather have an expert do it. Oh, uh, wanted to address trucks and traffic. We regularly bring some eyes on, onto the, uh, property with soil, with plastic, with mulch. We've been doing it for years, we're still doing it. Um, the, uh, Ryan's trucks are almost, I think they're all regular pickup trucks. One, I think, is a diesel truck. They're all like regular pickup trucks, other than one dump truck. I already have a dump truck and a few other large trucks, so it's not all that different from what I already have. The acceleration, deceleration, and bypass lane that I installed certainly helps with traffic, uh, coming in and out of the property. With regards to pesticides in spring, um, I just wanna, uh, thanks to some of my neighbors, we did, we were inspected by the Department of Agriculture, and I do get some frequent calls from them about whether or not we comply to the GAMS, the Generally Accepted Management Practices that are stipulated by the Department of Agriculture to run a agricultural business, and they came out and looked things over, and everything was wonderful, and I think, I think that's all I have, my.
Thank you for the improvements to the road tapers. We appreciate that, but it's a matter of, does this expanded use belong? And I wanted to ask you one question, one question, Mr. Papadalis.
Yes.
You've worked with Mr. Youngblood for a while, right?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you couldn't continue to work with him if his business was located in a more appropriate zoning district, LM or HM? You would not be able to work with him at that point?
No, no, that, that could happen.
That would be the more appropriate way to do that.
Well, um, uh, for me, it's very convenient having him right there where all the plants are.
Well, it's convenient, but is it right? That's the issue we're looking at as a commission. So, it can be done. That's what I wanted to.
Yes, it can.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to point out a couple of things in terms of the legal analysis here. I know you cited my letter of, of October fourth, but, I mean, you cited one provision in that letter. There are other provisions of that letter, too, that make it clear that we believe, and I'll quote, "That the proposed integrated uses have previously been operated on the property by Mueller's and/or Telly's," property by Mueller's and/or Telly's, and are therefore just a continuation of the lawful non-conforming uses." As Mr. Papadalis has stated, he has done design and installation. I think what we're looking at here is we're looking at the scope. We're not looking at the actual use, and the ordinance doesn't deal with scope. The ordinance deals with the use. If it is a continuation of a use, then it was, it's not an abandoned use. And we think that's the case. And we think the analysis that you went through assumes that there was a non-conforming use that was permitted at one point in time, and then that use was abandoned. I think that's how you get through steps 1, 2, 3, and then to step 4 in the attorney's memorandum. But we submit that that use wasn't abandoned, therefore you don't even get to step 4. That's only if we have an abandoned use, and we introduce a new use or a change or an alteration in use, sir. So that's what I would submit, that that would be the proper standard. And then the one other point I'd like to make in closing is that, you know, what's interesting is, we've heard, we've heard the concerns of the neighbors, we understand that. We've heard Mr. Youngblood and Mr. Papadalis say that they would accommodate those concerns. Those concerns are generated at this point in time without the berm, without the trees, without that type of separation. And we believe that that's what the process provides for, is when you make these adjustments to the site plan, and deal with those accommodations, and the buffering that's in the ordinance, you address the neighbors' concerns, and you mitigate those concerns. I listed nine concerns that we heard from the neighbors, and we specified how we're going to deal with those concerns, how we're going to address them. And we think that that, we submit that that would be the proper approach to take, and we would just ask for your consideration in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. So your contention, just one quick note, is if you stop doing something for a decade, that's not abandoned?
Well, Mr. Papadalis just explained that he hasn't stopped doing it for a decade. I mean, if we were, if we were going to oath here, if we were to go under oath here, he would testify to that fact. So, I mean, I'm sorry, sir, but what you're stating, we don't believe is true and accurate. So that's an assumption, and Mr. Papadalis has said that that is not the case. If you, if you make that assumption, then I understand your conclusions. But I don't think that that's an accurate assumption to make, and we haven't heard any testimony from anybody that that is in fact the case.
That's not a court rule. We don't have testimony. We have opinion from the public, so, thank you. Any other...
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think what we're disagreeing here is him planting a couple of shrubs is continuing use, and we disagree.
It's a scope issue, is what you're referring to.
We disagree that that makes in, you're earning your money today. Good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You ready for a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing first.
Stone move.
Support.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One second. If the landscaping use has been abandoned, does it constitute a change or alteration of the current Class A non-conforming nursery use, which should be or should not be allowed by making written findings and applying the criteria set forth in Section 715E4 as follows? Is the proposed use similar in operational characteristics as the former current non-conforming use? Is there an increase in the intensity of the use of the land, building, or structure involved? Will the change in use have a less detrimental effect or less negative impact on neighboring property than the existing non-conforming use it is replacing? And is the proposed use, although inappropriate to a uniform zoning pattern, desirable and useful in pursuit of the public interest, or is it more appropriate to the zoning district than the existing non-conforming use? Planning commission is the, may recommend, that's the motion. Okay. So that's what we have to consider when making the motion. So with that, the motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oppone.
I move to deny a change in the Class A non-conforming use on application number 19-39 based on the following. The proposed use is not similar in operational characteristics as the former non-conforming use. There will be an increase in the intensity of the use of the land, building, or structures involved. Such change in use will have a detrimental effect or negative impact on neighboring properties than the existing non-conforming use it is replacing, and the proposed use is inappropriate to a uniform zoning pattern, is not desirable, and not useful in pursuit of the public interest, or is more appropriate in a zoning district than existing non-conforming use.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Oppone, supported by Commissioner DeSico. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Darlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Any chair votes yes? Motion carries. Motion deny. Thank you. Okay, the meeting is still, we're not done yet, so if you'd like to sit down real quick...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Well, they're free to leave. We don't need to...
You're free to leave, yeah. I mean, if they want to leave, they're free to leave. But we're going to close the meeting out.
You don't have to sit here because he tells you to.
Planning directors report. Julie, you have anything?
No, I do not.
All right. We have any business from the floor? Hearing none, okay.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
it provides to residents. Within its borders, the township offers more than 1,100 acres in township parks, sports fields, playgrounds, and trails. Shelby Township provides an escape for nature lovers with many of its parks. Home to more than 100 species of native birds and animals, including nesting American bald eagles, and more than 80 species of trees, shrubs, wildflowers. It's hard not to fall for the township's beauty. Along with its parks and recreation facilities and programs, Shelby Township is home to Cherry Creek Golf Club, one of the finest public golf and banquet destinations in Michigan. The township also shares the 4,000-acre Stony Creek Metro Park, which is home to the beautiful and tranquil 500-acre Stony Creek Lake. Shelby Township also hosts part of the Macomb Orchard Trail, a 24-mile hike and bike path that connects 180 miles of trails across southeastern Michigan. Shelby Township's parks and access to the Clinton River are the heart of what makes the township a better place to play. Add the township's hundreds of miles of hiking and biking trails, and it's easy to recognize Shelby Township's access and opportunity for recreation are like no other places in the region. Among these trails is the westernmost portion of the Macomb Orchard Trail, which spans from the township's western border and ends in downtown Richmond. There are also trails that connect the township's 800-acre Riverbends Park to Lake St. Clair. Shelby Township is also home to a key connection of the Macomb County 70-mile trail loop and the planned Ironbell Bike Trail, which will ultimately connect the city of Detroit to the state of Wisconsin. Shelby Township's trails offer residents and visitors a scenic mix of up-north hikes and great asphalt bike paths. All of these amenities ensure that no matter what your outdoor interests might be, there is a place in Shelby Township for you and your family. A better place.